So my intent for this meeting is to hear from Marissa and then hear from Mary Parisian. And after both presenters have had the opportunity to speak, we will then open it up for questions and discussion. But as a reminder, Clerk Spivey will be keeping track of members who, if they raise their hand and have a question, and Clerk Spivey will recognize members in order to speak. So with that, Marissa, I'm going to allow you to introduce yourself because I've already said a little bit about you. But I just want to thank you so much. I know this is an extremely busy time for you, not only with this issue, but many other very important issues that the ACLU of Michigan tackles and is a part of. And we're just really so grateful that you're here today.
Thanks, Sarah. I'm happy to be here and thank you all for having me to spend this hour with you. My name is Marissa Kovach, the Legislative Director at the ACLU of Michigan. I've been at the ACLU for almost 15 years now and working primarily with the Michigan Legislature and working at state level policy and trying to move forward a proactive legislative agenda in Lansing for the ACLU that advances civil liberties and civil rights and then also working to try to protect those rights in Michigan too through our state level policy opportunities. So reproductive rights is an issue that I've been working on my entire career at the ACLU. So I wanted to use this time to just give a full kind of lay of the land what we're looking at at the national level, how it interplays in Michigan, what we're looking at in Michigan, the lawsuit that Sarah referenced and what that means, what this 1931 law means, and some of the immediate impacts that we're seeing as a result of the Roe decision about four weeks ago now. And then some of the work that groups are doing on the ground right now around reproductive rights and then some policy opportunities that they are seeing to try to ensure that there is a level of protection still in Michigan for the right to abortion now that Roe has been struck down. So for those of you who are also just visual learners, I made a couple of slides, but I'll go ahead and share. So starting kind of at the beginning, so a year ago, the Supreme Court agreed to take a case that the state of Mississippi was using as a direct invitation to the Supreme Court to overturn Roe. This is that Dobbs case that was just recently ruled a few weeks ago. So when the Supreme Court signaled that they were willing to take the case, those of us who work in abortion rights and reproductive rights knew that the writing was really on the wall and that what they were saying was that they were very much willing to entertain the question of whether Roe should be struck down and with that, a full federal protection to the right to abortion should also be struck down, would be effectively struck down with it. So as we suspected that Dobbs ruling did overturn the federal right to abortion, it kicked control to that right over to the states. And what we saw almost immediately and what we're seeing in the coming weeks that we know will happen in short order is that 50% of the population in this country is expected to lose access and lose their right to legal abortion in their home states. We have already seen that this decision has had some deadly consequences and the harm of that is falling hardest on Black women and other people of color who are already facing a maternal mortality crisis and that this is only going to be exacerbated and more extreme in those states that are determined to ban abortion or that have already banned abortion. We are seeing in states across the country, including Michigan, which because of that lawsuit, which I'll delve into a bit more, abortion is still legal in Michigan. We are still maintaining the status quo that Michiganders had while Roe was intact. But we're seeing our clinics and healthcare providers in Michigan absolutely flooded. There was an article I could lift up from the Detroit Free Press yesterday by a couple of doctors who are just naming some of the immediate impacts that they're seeing. But women who are coming into the state with severe medical emergencies and are coming in from states where they can't get the care that they need, they're facing ectopic pregnancies where they need immediate emergency care. Otherwise, their lives would be in danger. A woman who was left bleeding for over 10 hours, who had to be rushed across state lines to U of M Hospital to get care for an ectopic pregnancy, I think many of us are familiar with this infamous case that has, the light has been shined on in the last few weeks, about the 10-year-old in Ohio who was raped, became pregnant as a result of that rape and was past the six-week mark where abortion is allowable in Ohio. She had to go across state lines to Indiana in order to access the care that she needed legally. And even that has been scrutinized and put under a microscope. She has been investigated. The doctor who provided that legal care that she needed is being investigated. And that is just also a flavor of what we will be, what we're seeing in states where the right to this care is still legal, the doctors are being scrutinized, her clinics are overwhelmed because there are hundreds and thousands of women fleeing state lines to get the care that they need. And Michigan is one of the few states in the Midwest, stretching all the way down to the South right now, where that care is protected. So, but in Michigan, we're in a pretty precarious position because we do have this 1931 law that could go back into effect every time. We have a law that's still on the books that was never taken off that makes abortion illegal in Michigan. It would threaten doctors with prison for up to 15 years for providing abortion care. There is a very narrow exception that abortion care could be provided for the life of the mother. What we knew before Roe being overturned, and which we absolutely know now in states that have that very narrow exception, is that doctors are not able to feel safe even providing care that they know is life-saving, that they know is critical and health-saving because any abortion care they may provide can be scrutinized, that they would be putting themselves at risk for being pulled into the criminal legal system. So it is creating an incredible gray area where a doctor has to make a determination of, you know, how far along a patient may be, how far they progressed and their health has declined or their life is more so at risk before they're able to provide care. And anytime they provide that care, they are being put at risk of being pulled into that criminal legal system because of laws that criminalize, that would criminalize them with these narrow exceptions that don't allow them to practice in the way that they know is best for their patients and the way that they have been trained to provide care. This law that's on the books also states that any sort of pharmacy that sells abortion medication will be forced to record the name of the patient, their prescription information, the name and address of the doctor in the registry. So essentially creating a registry of who is accessing this medication that can be reported to the state. I mean, another effect of Roe being overturned that we've seen in other states, which may have been a bit more unexpected, is that women who are of childbirthing age, who are on certain medications and maybe unsafe for someone who is pregnant to use or maybe unsafe for their pregnancy, they're being denied important medication for chronic illnesses like lupus, rheumatoid arthritis, medications that they have been using for years, but because they are of child birthing age and they have, say, a chronic illness that's being treated with a medication that could threaten a pregnancy, doctors are not feeling comfortable prescribing that medication, even if a patient has no intention of becoming pregnant in the chance that they would become pregnant. And it could possibly, in the off-chance, result in a pregnancy complication because they're taking this medication for another illness that they have. So we're seeing this impact many areas of healthcare as well and trickle into that. Michigan is one of 26 states. I mentioned 50% of the country will, population will be likely residing in a state where they can't access abortion care. Michigan is one of those states that's poised to lose access now that Roe has been overturned. And if abortion were to be criminalized in Michigan, the closest access points for care will likely be Illinois, in Chicago, or New York State for the Upper Peninsula. Then that would likely be Minnesota would be the closest state where they could access care that they need. Now, Sarah mentioned that there is a lawsuit. So right now, the reason why we haven't felt any of the immediate effects of the Roe reversal is because there is a lawsuit on behalf of Planned Parenthood that the ACLU filed with Planned Parenthood to block the enforcement of this 1931 law. The Michigan Court of Claims, back just a few weeks before the Roe decision, issued a preliminary injunction that temporarily blocked this law from going into effect. It maintained that this is what is allowing us to maintain the status quo. This is why we have not immediately fallen into the public health crisis that we're seeing so many other states fall into right now. And what this means is that when the Supreme Court did overturn Roe, that clinics were not immediately forced to close their doors while this lawsuit progresses. However, this lawsuit has now faced some challenges from the Michigan Legislature, which has filed motions to intervene in the case, which has been accepted. So they have now filed motions to dismiss this case. And so we are responding to those requests. But you know, this is very much in the court's hands. And while we feel strongly that we have a good case on our hands, as this moves forward, at any point, you know, the injunction that we have that's ensuring that there's still this important healthcare in Michigan could be taken away. And then ultimately, we don't know what the final outcome of this decision will be. So this may be working its way through the courts over the next several months to a year. It may go up to the Michigan Appeals, it would go up to the Michigan Appeals Court and then ultimately the Michigan Supreme Court. I'll mention to the, Governor Whitmer has also filed a similar lawsuit. She filed directly with the Michigan Supreme Court and is suing a number of prosecutors, county prosecutors across the state. As county prosecutors, if Roe, you know, if the full effects of the Roe reversal were felt in Michigan would be one of the very first points of access, that would be criminally charging, could have the power to criminally charge doctors under the 1931 law. So she is also challenging the 1931 law as well. So there are these two dual lawsuits that are moving at the moment. And then finally, I will just briefly touch on this. I know this is like a C3 meeting, but there is a ballot initiative out there too that is being brought by the ACLU, Michigan Voices and Planned Parenthood, that submitted signatures last week to qualify for a constitutional amendment for the November ballot. This amendment would essentially, this amendment would essentially keep the status quo in Michigan. It would revert, it would ensure that those rights that were taken away at the federal level in Roe would be protected in our state constitution as well as ensuring that full scope of reproductive freedom and healthcare would also be protected. So not only would you have a constitutional right to abortion, but that would also include all of your other pregnancy decisions, knowing that there is a full range of healthcare needs folks need in their lives when they're making their reproductive health decisions. And that includes birth control, infertility care, miscarriage management. And this would ensure that all of that reproductive healthcare sits squarely within the doctor-patient relationship that politicians, that our state legislature cannot just restrict access to that care because they have a personal viewpoint on it, that that's an opposition, that these are healthcare decisions and they need to be treated as such and that the first priority needs to be that patients are able to get the care that they need under a doctor whose best judgment. So this amendment also does make sure that no one would go to prison for providing safe medical care or could be criminalized for their pregnancy outcomes too, which is what, an outcome that we're seeing with the Roe reversal, that women who are facing pregnancy complications such as miscarriage or stillbirth, that they are having those, you know, those really tragic results be scrutinized too as whether they had self-managed an abortion. So this would ensure that someone couldn't be criminalized for those pregnancy outcomes. So with that, I'll wrap. I know I'm going to hold for questions until the end while you get an update on the county resolution. So thanks so much.
And now we're going to move on to Mary Parisian, who is part of our Corporation Council staff. Mary, are you there?
Hi. Good afternoon to this honorable body.
Hi. Thank you so much for being here today.
It's my pleasure. Thank you. So the authority of the county and thereby the commission is actually pretty limited in what it can do with respect to regulating abortion. That's a power and authority that is reserved at the state level when it's not being regulated at the federal level, which is what Ms. Kovach had mentioned during her presentation. With that being said, the extent of what the commission can do is to issue a policy statement on the position of the body. And with the reversal of Roe versus Wade on June 24th, the commission did act swiftly. And on July 7th, they adopted a resolution that would essentially, or that does support the right of a woman to make a decision, medical decisions concerning her body. The resolution recognizes the detrimental effect that the reversal of Roe versus Wade will have on Wayne County residents financially, physically, emotionally, mentally. The resolution also asks the Michigan Supreme Court to rule that a woman's right to choose is a constitutional right. And lastly, the resolution encourages and supports Governor Whitmer's efforts that she's been taking in the state of Michigan to protect women's reproductive healthcare and the right to abortion. So those are just a few of the things that encompass the resolution.
And I'm going to take a point of privilege here and just ask a couple of questions real quick, Mary. When did they pass the resolution?
July 7th.
July 7th, okay. And then when they passed this resolution, do they forward it on to, who did they forward it on to?
So the resolution was forwarded on to Governor Whitmer's office. It was also forwarded to Senate Majority Leader Mike Shirkey and Speaker of the House Jason Wentworth, as well as members of the Wayne County delegation in the Michigan House of Representatives and the Michigan Senate.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Absolutely. No problem.
At this time, I would like to open it up for questions from the body. I certainly have some questions, but I'd like to give an opportunity if any of our members have any questions.
Chair Roberts, I recognize Member Hughes, whose hand was up.
Yes, yeah, yes. Okay, so my question to, it was more so for for young lady from the ACLU, Mary. So what I was wondering about, since we have these cases that are pending in the courts and then the Michigan, this, the governor's case that is pending, the lawsuit in the Michigan Supreme Court with regard to the 1931 law, because my understanding is the Michigan Supreme Court is up for election in this year. So the makeup of the court, do they perceive, do they think that the makeup of the court would change by the time the new election happens and changed the makeup of the court to change the potential outcome of these pending lawsuits?
I think it certainly is possible. I think just political projections or that the makeup of the court will generally stay after the election, but there are a couple of seats up, so there could be a shift.
Okay, okay, all right.
Yeah, I was just going to say, Member Hughes, if you have any follow-up, it's fine.
Yes, and so, okay, so you're, I mean, I know that it potentially is always a possibility. I just didn't, I wasn't sure of the, you know, is it, I don't know what positions are exactly up, like which justices' positions are up, whether they lean conservative or lean Democratic. And so in your understanding, do you feel like the projections potentially could be leaning liberal or conservative for those elections? Do you know anything about that?
Yeah, I think the projection is that there will be, there will still be a majority of justices that we would project, at least, they haven't taken this issue up, the sitting ones, but that we would project would be supportive of these rights.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Any other members?
Member Gator, you are recognized.
Thank you so much. Thank you for, Ms. Parisian, for presenting today. This information is very near and dear to me, given me being a woman, an African-American woman, and a community leader. And so I want to know, like, given the best advice you can give or are willing to give, what can we do for us who pretty much take grassroots approaches to being able to fight for, you know, healthcare rights or rights such as this? What can you recommend that we do to kind of create momentum or keep the momentum and at least get information quickly if possible to those in our respective communities? Thank you.
I just want to chime in real quickly, just as a reminder. This was in the email that I sent out, but as a public body that is supported by taxpayer dollars, we cannot, as a women's commission, advocate for or against a ballot initiative or any individual running for elected office or an election. I just want to make sure that's clear. I know that's not the intent of your question, but just moving forward, I just want to make that sure that that's clear for this body. And my understanding is you're really asking as, like, as an individual and as an activist and leader in your community, you know, what can you do?
I think most importantly, Chair Roberts, my question is about getting the real information out as fast as I could, regardless of what side you're on. So it's more about education and awareness instead of promoting one side or over the other.
Good afternoon. Vice Chair Gator, thank you for the question. So just to be clear, are you asking the best way that you, as an individual, can go out and spread the information that was presented here today?
I'm asking what is the best mode or platform to get information? If she is willing to share it or offer it, any websites? How do we stay abreast of any legal proceedings just so we can keep community aware of what's going on as quickly as we can?
So I actually would highly recommend, I keep all of the updates that I receive are from Governor Whitmer's website. And if you go on there and you sign up on her email list, you'll receive emails for all of her immediate press releases. And many of those are fantastic and provide information that day of what happened. So for instance, last week, Governor Whitmer signed an executive order that she is refusing to extradite women who come to the state of Michigan to seek reproductive healthcare and abortions. That's huge, but I would not have known about it on the news. I wouldn't have known about it in the newspaper or on Facebook or Twitter. I found out specifically because I received the updates from her office. So that's a great way of getting information.
Thank you so much. Governor Whitmer's direct website. And you can sign up to get newsletters and news links as she posts them or her team.
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
And Marissa, do you have any recommendations for Vice Chair Gator and for other members of the body who may be interested as well in this type of information?
I would say on the front of the lawsuit that we have with the Court of Claims right now, that's one, that injunction, if you sign up for updates with ACLU of Michigan, we'll be sharing those. You know, we're, right now, some of the actions being taken on the lawsuit are very in the weeds. But if, for those big moments of if we're moving forward in the court, if we get another ruling, if an injunction is kept, if the injunction is kept in place, all of that information, that'll, I think, be most important to your constituents too, because they're going to want to know, how does this impact me? When there is an update that's going to impact people on the ground directly, we'll be sharing those updates.
That's fantastic. And I would think also, if members had any interest in signing up for, I don't know what they would call it, if it's e-news or updates from Planned Parenthood, is this thing, I'm sure, a number one issue for them right now, they're probably a good resource as well. I had a question, Marissa, around the 1931 law, the aspect that you mentioned regarding pharmacies and if they were to sell a medication that would, an abortion medication, that people have to write down the person's name, their address, and the prescribing doctor, is that correct? I'm just wondering how that fits in lines with HIPAA laws. Oh, you're on mute. You're on mute.
That's a very good question. I think the best answer I can give is like, we don't fully know because HIPAA was passed in the 90s and this is a law from 1931. If you look directly at the language, it uses the most outdated language. It was written for a time when we did not have the medical advances that we have now, that we didn't have the contraception and medication that we have now around reproductive health. So it will, you know, that's partly why we have this lawsuit too, because we need the court to tell us what does this mean because people need clear lines on what is allowable. We can't have medical care operating in gray area, especially when there's, you know, the threat of people's personal privacy at stake and the risk of them being charged with crimes. But yeah, I think there's some concern about HIPAA violations, like we've seen in other states where medication that is not intended for the purpose of abortion is being scrutinized because it could interact negatively with pregnancy. How does that play into that portion of the law too? You know, what does this open up? I mean, the reversal of Roe is, the reversal of Roe is a, is a direct attack on our personal privacy and our personal medical decisions. So I mean, this is, this 1931 law and that registry very much kind of fits into, you know, what the intended outcome of all of this is. So we'll have to see what happens there.
And just from your work on this, in terms of the Supreme Court decision, and I'm drawing a blank, what is it called when they, they like issue an opinion, right? An opinion on the decision. Was there any mention of, because one of the things that I'm most concerned about with this is that everything falls on the law. So was there anything written about in the opinion that would suggest that any measures would be taken to hold men equally responsible for the pregnancy?
I, not that I recall. I don't think that was, that was made mention in the written opinion at all.
I see Member Hughes's hand is raised, but Clerk Spivey, was there anyone before Member Hughes?
No. Member Hughes is recognized.
Yes, I just wanted to talk about that in particular. Not that the opinion had anything that allowed for that, I mean, that specifically talked to that, but indirectly, from my understanding, if, you know, they're saying that the child, you know, the life of a child begins from conception, then there is talk about legislatures allowing for child support to begin at conception and some legislatures, I believe, from what, I'm, this is, I'm not 100% certain. I mean, saw this on like social media. And I got it from an attorney friend of mine, so I wouldn't, I think it's pretty accurate that, you know, some of the congressmen or senators have that, you know, some of the congressmen or senators have put forth a bill to make child support start at conception. So that may be, I mean, indirectly the result.
Okay, thank you.
Making, making it as possible, yes.
Thank you for sharing that.
No problem, you're welcome.
Marissa, I have another question for you, and I know that you're not a medical professional, but I was just wondering if you could speak to, and just real briefly, you know, when I, when I served in the legislature, there was a citizen initiative that the legislature essentially did not take action on, so it became law that prohibitive insurance companies from providing abortion coverage unless the individual bought a separate insurance rider. And this was a public policy issue that I worked on with Planned Parenthood and the ACLU of Michigan. And one of the issues that we worked on and we organized around and we worked with doctors on are these issues of, you know, ectopic pregnancies or pregnancies where, you know, the pregnancy can't come to full term, or there's other challenges with malformations. And Marissa, I just don't know if you could just talk a little bit about that, because sometimes this issue is very charged, but there's oftentimes what you would consider, quote, you know, kind of like the perfect scenario. And yet there are challenges with completion of the pregnancy, but yet the medical procedure and the actual billing code for those procedures are an abortion. So I don't know if you could just like touch base on that a little bit, or if you know anything about that?
Yeah, I mean, I think this is where it gets a little murky. So so, so what do you know, when you, you know, a miscarriage and the care someone needs for a miscarriage is billed the same as having an abortion. The care someone has when they have a non-viable ectopic pregnancy, and the only treatment for an ectopic pregnancy is, is to discontinue the pregnancy because there is no way that the mother or the fetus can survive, like that's billed as an abortion. So, I mean, what we have seen is that in states, including Michigan, is when you roll back abortion rights, it comes into play in lots of other critical, in lots of other critical ways, like miscarriage care, where we have seen hospitals refuse to provide miscarriage care to women who need to be stabilized or who are gravely, their health is gravely at risk. So, I mean, I think it just underscores ultimately that abortion is healthcare. There are many reasons someone may need it in their lifetime. There are some serious, there are serious health reasons, there are serious reasons that can protect their life. There are also just the reason that someone may not want to be pregnant. And there's just a full range of reasons that are so incredibly personal. And that's why it's so important that these decisions need to be kept within the sphere of medicine and with patients and their doctors. Because I think Sarah, just the examples you threw out demonstrated that there, there are just so many nuances and scenarios at play here that are so incredibly personal. And, and that there are also, it leaves a lot of room for a lot of also probably unintended consequences, I think. What we've, I've just seen anecdotally firsthand is with Roe being overturned, what, what I've always known is that miscarriage care can very easily be undermined. And a woman who's facing a miscarriage can face some severe health consequences if she doesn't get the care that she needs. And that that has been directly impacted in states that roll back the right to abortion. And I think that came as a surprise to many people in the last few weeks, as we've seen how it's played out in states that have completely eliminated the right, that we're facing that public health crisis of women who need miscarriage care and can't get it, who are facing severe fetal anomalies, who are, who are having ectopic pregnancies and all these scenarios that you would think and we know are life-threatening, but they're still not able to get the care that they need.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from members? Clerk Spivey, do you see any?
I don't see any other hands.
Well, Marissa, thank you so much for, again, taking the time to come and speak with us and answer our questions. We really do appreciate your time and your work.
Thanks so much.
And Mary, I also want to thank you so much for the time and effort that you put into preparing for the meeting today and providing this update for us on the resolution that the Wayne County Commission passed. So thank you.
Thank you, ladies.
Clerk Spivey, moving on to the next item?
Item C2, under New Business, update on resolution passed by the Wayne County Commission on supporting a woman's right to bodily integrity and advocating for affording women the freedom to make their own decisions in consolation with their doctors about their health, which includes the right to make informed decisions about whether and when to bear children.
Clerk Spivey, we already covered that when Mary spoke. I think we did it as one item under New Business.
Okay, so moving on to item D, such other matters as may be properly submitted before the commission?
Okay, any other such matters from the body? Okay, moving on to the next item?
Item E, public comments.
Is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak? Is there anyone from the public? Moving on, and that would be adjournments. And our, first, before I adjourn the meeting, I just want to thank everyone for coming to the meeting today. So with that, our meeting is adjourned. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.